As we look to the future, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion made and seconded at the minutes of the previous meeting, we approve and submit any discussion on the motion.
Gibson?
Does that include the special meeting also?
That does include the special meeting.
Gibson votes yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me ask for the blanket motion.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, any council member have any item they care to pull on the blanket motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Chief McCaw, can you come to the microphone, please? Let me just briefly read this and I'll present this to you. Where is the citizens of North Little Rock and this city council, the top priority of which is their safety and security, and where is the safety from fires important to the citizens and local firefighters who put their life on the line? And as we know, we want to emphasize this, and I'll paraphrase some of the where ises, to cause attention for all of our citizens to how important it is to assist in their own safety and security through Fire Prevention Week. So as a result of what this department is going to do and what this community is interested in, please let me declare the week of October 3rd through 9th is Fire Prevention Week and urge our citizens to heed the advice and install smoke alarms and to plan and practice fire drills and to remember the theme of Fire Prevention Week, which is it's Fire Prevention Week, test your smoke alarms because it's really amazing how that old adage of an ounce of prevention works much more than a pound of cure. We know that that small step is proven time and again to save lives and the adage of that little device has cost lives. Thank you, Mary. I'd like to invite all the public out next week to Kroger parking lot at McCain and North Hills on Tuesday night. We're going to have our annual fire fest. We'll have a lot of equipment on display and a lot of children need to come by and take part in everything we've got there. And I would like to point out that twice this year already, two of the smoke alarms that we've installed through our program did save a couple of lives. So it does work. Please, everybody check their batteries. Chief Rhodes, you have any? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, Chief Rhodes. With that, let me recognize Herman Shirley. Herman is chairman of our centennial and among a lot of other things he works with and does for the community. So Herman, if I could turn the microphone over to you, I know you have a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. In our centennial year, our history commission thought it would be a good idea to start recognizing those families that were early settlers around here. And tonight, we're very pleased to have two families here that were truly early settlers in our city. And so will the members of the Weed family come forward, please? This is Mrs. Frida Weed Kennedy and with her is Edward Weed. John W. Weed was a North Little Rock alderman in the twenties and as he was serving, he was murdered. And so his wife ran for his unfinished term and was elected. She was the first female elected alderman in North Little Rock. And she not only was elected for that short term, she elected two more times. Her picture's right out here in the hall. And so this is a great honor for me to present to Mrs. Kennedy and Mr. Weed a certificate indicating that they have been families around here for 100 years.
Let me congratulate you on behalf of the council and the community. We are enjoying in a very focused way the history of this city and it's interesting to know, I don't know that that fact was right before us, but to have a relative that was the first lady council member of this community in the twenties speaks volume. So we appreciate y'all being here. If you want to make any comments, feel free.
Well, I'm not one that can speak very well in front of people, but I really appreciate this because that's something really to be proud of, have your grandmother, first elected woman alderman.
And it's an honor for us, too. Thank you.
And let me say this, Mr. Weed has brought to the history commission a real archive of files on their family and we've incorporated into our records and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. You care to say anything?
No, sir. I'm just glad to be able to carry on the family name.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and thanks again for the history and sharing the history that you have with us.
And now we have another family. Mrs. Herndon, come on up here. This certificate is going to be presented to Mary Florence Flossie Dukes Herndon. Her father was an alderman from 1933 to 1941. And she has an extensive family. She told me, how many grandkids and great-grandkids and great-great-grandkids?
Fourteen great, fourteen grandchildren and thirteen great-great-grandchildren and three little ones.
It's a pleasure for me and the mayor to present you with this certificate indicating that your family is a centennial family and I'd like to give one to you, too.
May I say one thing?
You bet. Shirley, would you move that microphone just a little closer up there so we can make sure that all the folks at home enjoy this as much as we are?
Well, I've been wanting to come over here in Argen, Argen. I'm 93 years old, Wednesday. And my daddy was Frank Dukes and he was a railroad man and he belonged, he came up here and was thing. And he was wonderful and I was just so proud of him and I'm proud of North Little Rock, too. But I don't like, I wish we'd just kept on the Argen.
Well, Ms. Herndon, we have, we have kept a little Argen there on the seal.
Yeah.
We took great pains to have a seal made that depicted the years that North Little Rock was known as Argen and it's right there, C of A, that's the same seal that's right outside. And I like to think of the red on that seal as the blood of our service people that have given their lives over the years. And of course, the blue in honor of the mayor's got to be for the river coming right down through us, all the way out of Prince Steve, Colorado mountains. So we are very pleased to have opportunity to give you this certificate.
Well, just one more thing. I just haven't been over here in Argen in so long, I just want to see everybody that lives over here and I wish I still lived over here, but I don't. I married a guy over in North Little Rock. But what I want to tell you was when I saw those steps, big steps down there, I asked how old this building was and you told me 100, wasn't it? Somebody did.
1940.
Well, anyway, when I was a little bitty tiny girl, six years old, and the mayor, a new mayor, was coming down those things down there, those thing. And on each side of him, there were little girls, all dressed up in fancy clothes on each side. And I will never, I was just about six years old.
And she was one of them.
I was one of them. And this is my grandson.
Ms. Herndon, about 14 years ago, I wanted to talk about changing the name of the city and I wish you had been around then because I thought I was the only one. But we're sure glad you're here and we appreciate you being a part of our community and we don't, anytime you want to come back, you let us know.
I'll do that. I'll do that.
And you have a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The history commission wants to recognize these early settlers. So if your family's one of them, call the history commission, let us know. We want to get that information and we want to learn about your family. So just let us know. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Take care. Thank y'all very much. Let's give them one more applause. Major Jackson of the U.S. Marine Corps, Major Jackson has been visiting with our office about a, an exercise, a training exercise that's going to be conducted in October and wanted to make sure that the community was aware of it. We're going to, we're going to have a few sound, I won't say interruptions, but sound simulations that are going to be around. We, I know had an opportunity to work with the U.S., the United States Marines, the training aspect of that some years, several years ago, when we had an exercise and utilized our community and we're proud to be a part of this exercise, Major. Share with us what we're going to do and anything else we can be helpful on, let us know.
I appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank everybody for allowing me to come here and talk to you about this and give you this presentation. Just to give you a little bit of background about why this came up, obviously, everybody knows what's going on in Iraq and Afghanistan. And the possibility always stands that the Marine Reserve Unit here can get called up at any time. That being said, we want to train them as realistically as we can, as often as we can. So what we came up with is we get to use Camp Robinson on a regular basis and it's a great facility. I'm one of the only Marine Corps Reserve Units in the United States that has that facility outside of us, so it's very beneficial to us, but the troops get used to it after a while. So what we wanted to do was to take them out, get them to some unfamiliar terrain and let them to train out there. What we came up with was on October 2nd, we'd like to utilize the warehouse complex. It's at 324 Buckeye. And what we'll be doing there is essentially a round robin training exercise where there'll be a little bit of what we call convoy operations, basically how to quickly get on and off of five-ton trucks, which is not the easiest thing in the world if you've ever done it. Some machine gun training, though that won't involve any fire. And then vehicle checkpoints, basically screening vehicles as they come through for any type of explosive devices, that kind of thing. Obviously, all that is, there'll be mockups there, but it'll be simulated. The big thing that y'all are most likely interested in is the fact that we'll be, we'd like to fire blanks. Blanks have the normal sound that a regular 556 or M16 rifle and 249 squad automatic rifle will have. So it will be rather loud, though it'll only be sporadic. And the other thing that we'd like to utilize, there's a new type of munition out there called simmunitions and it's actually a great learning tool. Alls you have to do is refit the upper receiver of an M16 with a simmunitions upper receiver. What that does is it takes the caliber down from a 556 to a nine mil. All right, and what this round does, it's basically a small paintball, if you can imagine that. It's fired out of this thing and it'll travel up to about 150 feet. But let me tell you, when it hits you, it's quite a punch. All right, and the objective is, is you get the realism and understand that when somebody's shooting back at you, that you can get shot. Okay? That makes you use the techniques that you want to utilize in combat. We'd like to use that in this area also. With the simmunitions, though, there is one warehouse and in the presentation, Mr. Mayor, there's photographs of that in there. The warehouse itself is about quarter inch corrugated steel. The rounds are not going to go through that, not even close to going through that, but just because of where we'll be, we will keep all these simmunitions fire inside that warehouse. The realism of this thing and what we can do with them, I believe, will greatly enhance the training that's going to go on here. What we were looking at is going to take us a little bit because we've only got one bus to go back and forth. It'll take us a few hours to get the whole company out there. Talking about departing first thing, probably about starting 04 on Saturday morning in order to get out there, get everything set up and then the actual training would occur from 09 until about 1800. All right, so in that time, it's when you would hear the rifle fire. It won't be constant, it'll only be in spurts throughout the day when their actual training is going on. There is an actual training schedule back inside the presentation, if you want to look at that. Some of the other requirements we have is, one of the things that is instituted by the Marine Corps is a force protection issue, which is, we call guardian angels, and that's Marines that have M16s with loaded rounds and that's purely for protection of the Marines while we're out there. It's something that we're required to do. We'd have four Marines roaming around like that. In addition, we've made coordination with the North Little Rock Police. They've agreed to have a police unit out there in case there is any, or any individuals become interested in what's going on around us. We're going to put signs up around the outside of the fence. That is one thing, is all this training will occur inside of essentially a compound, inside of a enclosed fence area. We're not going to come outside of that. It also gives us a little bit of buffer, so anybody who's roaming around will be able to just walk in and additionally with the police there, that'll help. We're going to have one entry point that's going to be used as the vehicle checkpoint and we hope to be done by about 1800 with everybody moving out of there by about 1900. So you're only, you're talking about that window from about 09, about nine o'clock in the morning until about six o'clock in the evening that we would actually be doing this. Also, we've got a press release that's going to go out tomorrow morning pending the approval of the council and that's going through the North Little Rock Police. They're actually going to release that.
Now, what day is that again?
It's on the 2nd of October, sir. It's a Saturday. Yes, sir, it's actually next weekend.
Unless there's an objection from this council, I've authorized, is this, is this our Southern Cotton, is this our Southern Cotton property? So it's the, it's the old Southern Cotton Mill property that's off of East Broadway for anybody that didn't catch the address. And we're proud to work with the Marine Corps, I'm sure this community would be, and Major, we appreciate you coming and absent any objection, we look forward to doing that as well as anything else that we could do to help our military out and certainly our Marines. We appreciate what you do.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just anything else, just let us know and we'll look forward to make sure we don't get anywhere close for paintballs on that Saturday.
Yes, sir. Only thing, sir, is we've got Toys for Tots coming up, if everybody will just remember that, coming up in November, December.
We, you know, we, we know that, that effort and we look forward to working with you on that also in November and December. Thanks for all of what you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Major. I think that takes us now to the...
Call the woman Robinson's. She's got the presentation.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Call the woman Robinson.
Good evening. I'm proud to let you, Mayor Hayes, and my fellow council members know that seven or eight after-school programs here in the city of North Little Rock are about to be given $100,000 to begin an exciting real-life opportunity for their kids to learn how to invest in the stock market. Now, each after-school program will receive $100,000 in stock market bucks and this program will mirror the stock market. The Stock Market Game is a program sponsored by the Arkansas Council on Economic Education, which is a nonprofit, nonpartisan educational organization founded to promote economic literacy in Arkansas. Their mission is to prepare students to become fully participating citizens by providing them with an understanding of the American economic system and an ability to make decisions. And this group, they will compete against each other. We all attended a training about two weeks ago and I believe it's my understanding that we are the first, now this program is already in public schools, but I think that we here in North Little Rock, our after-school programs are the first in the state. And they will be competing against each other, 4th through 6th grade, 7th through 9th grade, 10th through 12th grade. And they are here tonight and I would like, Mayor, if at all possible, for them to come to the mic, give us the name of their program and if they know how many teams, you know, to let us know how many teams they're going to have. And this program will start October the 4th. Y'all, I'm real excited about this because this is, you know, I consider this part of prevention for our youth and also training them. And if they will come to the mic, these, the sponsors, and just let us know the name of your program and if you already have your teams, how many teams you've got.
Okay, the microphone's open. Y'all want to come on up?
Come on up.
Ray, it's good to see you.
If they just come to the microphone and, you know...
Mr. Lee?
Tell us the name of their team, I mean, their after-school program. If you know how many teams you have, let us know that. And like I say, this program starts October the 4th and ends in December.
Good afternoon to Mayor Hayes and council. My name is Dorance Allen and our after-school program is housed at the St. Stephen Baptist Church, 902 E Street, that's in Dixie Edition, and the Reverend Donald Greg Reed is our pastor. At this time, we only have one team, but hopefully we will get another team. And the name of our team is SSMBC, which stands for St. Stephen's Missionary Baptist Church. We're very happy to be a part of this program. It is new to us. We plan on winning, if not, we're going to get awfully close.
Well, and if Mr. Navorecheck is the head of our youth services, if he can be of any assistance in helping you recruit team members, let us know.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Mayor Hayes, council. My name is Ray Smith and I'm from the Washington Avenue area Friends Neighborhood Association. And we just started and we're going to see what we can do with it. Thank you.
You bet. We appreciate it. Good to see you again, Ray. Anyone else? Mr. Lee?
I just want to say, I'm Robert Lee and I will be working with them with setting up any type of computer equipment or software they may have. As a retired computer programmer, I offer my services to this after-school program because I think it is a, it's a great program.
Well, we appreciate your help on this and many other things. Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Howa Arthur Lewis with Electric Company and I kind of, I've always been a community minded person and so I'm looking to be maybe a team member to help out with the friends or the St. Stephen's area.
Mr. Lewis, we appreciate what you do daytime and after hours. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Christine Hickman and with me is my pastor, Reverend Marcia, and Dick and Hickman. We're from the Eastern Star Baptist Church. We have an after-school program called the Yes Center. We have two teams already registered, Sister Linda, we did get them registered. They're called the Eastern Star Wizards and the Eastern Star Fellows. We'll be using, one team will be grade seven through nine and the other one will be grade 10 through 12. We are excited to have an opportunity to educate children in different areas.
We're keeping an eye on you and maybe we'll put a few dollars in on the market after we find out who the results are. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Bernice Wilson and I'm representing Not Home Alone Aftercare. Our aftercare center is located at 2015 Main Street, housed in the First Baptist Education Building. The owners of the center is Diane and Henry Overton. We are starting out with one team and we welcome any of you who have children that are not already in an aftercare program to join Not Home Alone Aftercare Program and that's into the stock program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Hayes, members of the council, my name is Tina Worrell. I'm with the Parks and Recreation Department and we're happy that we are sponsoring one team this year, well, three teams, one center at Glenview Community Center. We hope that next semester we'll be able to pick up our other two community centers that work with our youth and we look at having three teams. This is Jeff Kaplinger, who will be overseeing the program. He's our program supervisor.
Jeff, do you have any comments?
No, we're meeting with a group of our students this Wednesday afternoon to discuss the program with them and get it started.
We are, we're excited about it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alderman Robinson.
North Little Rock Boys and Girls Club is participating here on 13th and Maple. They're participating also. So the kids, you know, a lot of them have heard about it, they're real excited and they're ready, ready to buy and trade stock.
Let's go to town. Okay. Thank y'all very much. We appreciate what you're doing. Let's go to old business and hold the first one. Mr. Matthews, again, has his priorities right. He's with one of his children in soccer or some, I forgot what this sport was, but he's family in it. Next item?
Resolution 0475, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it. And while I'm calling this, Mr. Larson, do you and the Kirklands want to come to the microphone?
A resolution certifying local government endorsement of Orbea USA LLC to participate in the tax-backed program is authorized by Section 1542706D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Before I call for a vote, I want to introduce, of course, you know Todd Larson, our director of the Economic Development Corporation. Next to him are TJ and Tony Kirklands, who are proprietors, I guess you could say, in a, in a sense of the, or at least of representatives of the Orbea USA Bicycle Distributorship. And as Mr. Larson tells me, that North Little Rock will be the distributor headquarters for the national distributorship that y'all are bringing over from the south side and a lot of why you're here, and I won't presume any of the comments because I want to offer each of y'all an opportunity to say something of the fact that our trail, the bicycle trail that's here and, and obviously the advocacy that this council and this community, as well as certainly our friends on, on both sides of the river and County Judge Valines, who I know opened trails just last week. So we're very proud that y'all are going to be with us and look forward to your distributorship growing and prospering and anything we can do to help, we'll sure do it. If I could open the microphone to either one or both to make some comments, we'll be happy to hear from you.
My name's Tony Kirkland. I'm the managing director for Orbea USA. I started this four years ago in Little Rock and I just wanted to take a moment to tell you that the way that I found this property in North Little Rock is because of the bike trail. I'm a Little Rock, Heights Hill Crest person and some of my first experiences in North Little Rock have been over here on the bike trail. And after my wife and I riding this repeatedly for a couple of months, we decided to take a detour and see what was going on in downtown North Little Rock. And we ended up on Main Street Argen and I was just like, wow, this is fantastic. What a really neat revival is going on in the city. And at that time, I was looking for a piece of property and my real estate people were taking me out to the airport, or out to southwest Little Rock and I didn't want to be any part of that. And through riding back to the bike path that day, we rode past ABC Supply Building on 600 North Broadway and there it was. It was the absolute perfect building for us. And it was thanks to that bike path what brought us here to Argen. So we're thrilled to be here. And my brother wants to say a few words about our business and we look forward to being a great partner in Argen.
We're excited about that and we look forward to perhaps even a retail option either there or maybe even closer to our main street. We're, we're excited about what you do and the industry that you represent and we're excited about you being a part of our community, so...
Thank you very much.
With that, welcome and hello, brother.
It's not actually a family business. We're part of a 160-year-old company in Spain that's been making bicycles for 75 years and we moved into this large facility because we're going to initiate pretty medium-scale, medium-to-high-scale assembly operations for bicycles that are going to support the markets in Canada, North America, and America, some central American countries in the Caribbean. So we look to grow our presence in the community and look to participate with you guys going forward. Just a quick note to thank some of the people that have helped us. Of note, Jim Riley in the plans office was very helpful, Todd Larson in Economic Development, and I think we've met many, many members of the fire department in getting that building up and codes. So thank you very much for the support.
Well, when are we going to be in-house and in operations?
We're going to be moving starting the 14th of October, probably through the month after that, probably close on about the 7th of November. We've, we've got most of the improvements complete and if you'll drive by on the way home, you'll see our new sign-up on the building today.
Well, thanks a lot and welcome. We're proud to have you here. And Mr. Larson, you got any comments?
Well, my, my only thought is that this is a private company and we help them grow and nurture their business. Maybe in a few years, we can have some of Alderman Robinson's stock market wizards take them public.
And we look forward, when that goes public, to those folks who invest, just, you know, watch out, Microsoft stocks on the way up, right? On the, on the motion, on the vote, Ms. Whitby, would you call her over?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Let's go to new business.
Resolution 0481, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating funds for additional construction work to restore areas of the mayor's offices to their original historic design.
Move for adoption.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, before I call for a vote, uh, you know, making sure everybody understands, you know, we did have and do have insurance on the water loss that occurred. Uh, and, and perhaps even some of the funds that we receive will help support this. Uh, we've been out of the office for about a month now, I believe, and it looks like it's probably gonna be, you know, maybe another month to six weeks. While we're bringing her, bringing our offices back, there is some additional work, uh, to restore the roofline to the same level that it originally was in, uh, Ms. Taylor's office and, uh, and, and her adjoining office. So we, we're actually doing a little bit more than what the damage occurred, and that's why we're bringing this, uh, to the council. Uh, we hope that, uh, that this amount is, is offset by some additional recoveries and insurance. With that, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0482, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution adopting the National Incident Management System established by the United States Department of Homeland Security for all emergency responses by departments in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
I'd second it. I'd like to be a sponsor with you.
All right, uh, Alderman Thomas, so without objection, is a co-sponsor of that. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0483, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution recognizing sacrifices the U.S. troops have made in the war on terrorism and their accomplishments in improving the lives of the people of Iraq.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion? Uh, and Alderman Thomas, did you?
Yes, I, I would like to read it.
All right, let's read it. Uh, I think that's a good idea, Alderman.
Whereas hundreds of U.S. troops have given their lives in the pursuit of liberating and bringing stability and democracy to the people of Iraq. And whereas U.S. soldiers are committed to rebuilding Iraq's infrastructure and fostering goodwill between our people. And whereas over 3,000 Iraqi schools have been renovated or will be completed soon since the overthrow of Saddam Hussein. Whereas 9 million new math and science textbooks have been printed and distributed without pro-Saddam Hussein propaganda. And 159,000 desks have been distributed to Iraqi schools. Whereas 76,000 new jobs have been created by the Iraqi National Employment Program. Whereas the current budget of the Iraqi Ministry of Health is 25 times greater than the annual budget under Saddam Hussein's reign, resulting in a 25% increase in immunizations among Iraqi children and immunizations for pregnant Iraqi women to improve prenatal care. Whereas 20 million of Iraq's 27 million citizens receive clean water due to new water and sanitation product, projects. And whereas 81 Iraqi women serve on neighborhood and district councils around Baghdad, six Iraqi women have been appointed as cabinet-level ministers in the newly-formed Iraqi interim government. And whereas obstacles remain, but America's commitment to fostering peace and goodwill does not fade. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, Section 1, that the mayor and city council hereby recognize the sacrifices made by our U.S. troops in the war on terrorism, their accomplishments in improving the lives of the people of Iraq, and the importance of protecting America by expanding democracy throughout the world. Section 2, that is.
Uh, that just indicates that I'm supposed to send this to a variety of people, including General Ryan and others, so I don't know that, you know, that's necessary, but.
Be added too.
Uh, you know, both Alderman Thomas and Alderman are very, uh, added as sponsors. Uh, any further, uh, discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0484, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Richard Lindsay to the Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion, Ms. Whitby.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0485, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to, to accept the donation of certain property from New Hope Church.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Alderman Robinson?
I have a comment I just wanna make, and I don't know if it should go in this resolution. Uh, New Hope Church, uh, is donating one acre of land to the city. But it, with that donation, they want, it, it will be a park, and the park is to be named Don A. Kelly Park. So should that be a part of the resolution?
I don't know that that's a problem, but.
Is there a problem?
Uh, I think that, that we'd need to take that, I, I think, I'm sure the Parks Commission would, would go along with that.
They just wanna make sure.
That's really the proper naming authority. But we can recommend to the commission, uh, that that be done.
Okay.
At such time as they, uh, uh, take that under their wing.
Okay, well, they just wanted to make sure that in the, giving the land, the one acre for the park, that it be named Don A. Kelly, so.
Why don't we take, I, I'll take that in the form of amendment, that the, uh, that the church is recommending that that land, uh, you know, should it be named a park, be named the Don A. Kelly.
Uh-huh.
Memorial Park.
Second.
Uh, that, that motion was made by Alderman Robinson and seconded by Alderman Barry. Do you have that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Uh, on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Mayor? I'm sorry. Do we have a policy regarding transfer of property, uh, during phase, doing phase-one assessments? Environmental assessments when we take pieces of property?
We have nothing by ordinance that's been, uh, created or anything.
As, as a matter of practice, do we in fact do that?
I know we have done phase-one environmentals on property that we suspected had some problems, like along the river before we purchased them, and so forth, where they had a history of, you know, heavy, uh, commercial and industrial uses.
Okay.
Uh, when you transfer a title to some property with an environmental problem, you may transfer a title, but you don't necessarily transfer liability at such time.
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct.
But, but the person with the deep pockets in the, ends up with a liability?
I don't disagree. And, uh, and, and so, I mean, I think your question you raised is a, is a good question. Uh, you know, at this point, the city council is authorizing acceptance of that. But I would also, uh, you know, ask, and I'll just indicate, that should, uh, after a review by planning, uh, and a recommendation by planning to the city attorney's office, that we be given any information as to whether or not you think any environmental, uh, assessment needs to be done.
Just a wooded area?
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, you know, and, and you're probably right, but, you know.
That's fine.
Until we get some assessment from planning as well as, so, you know, if, if you would work with planning, uh, Mr. Suskey, and get them to give you a recommendation as to whether any other investigation needs to be done regarding environmental aspects of the property. And then, uh, let me know, uh, if you could do it, you know, this, well, it, it'll be sometime before the, uh, actual transfer takes place. But let's see what we can do this week, if that's possible.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay. All right. Uh, do I, do we, are we need a motion to adopt as amended, or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, motion made, and is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0486, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating funds from the general fund for the 30% local share FY03 Assistance to Firefighters Fire Prevention Grant Program.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0487, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, please call it.
A resolution appropriating funds from the general fund for the 30% local share of the FY03 Assistance to Firefighters Fire Prevention and Safety Grant Program.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0488, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a letter of agreement with the city of Little Rock, Pulaski County, and Little Rock Convention and Visitors Bureau appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second. Alderman?
I, I guess the advertising promotion doesn't have the funds to do this.
Well, uh, they, they, they may or may not. I know that we've worked with them pretty heavily on the Centennial, and so, you know, they, they give the vast majority of those funds that they have to operate our Parks Department. So, you know, I, I didn't even ask them to participate. I thought that this would be one that, you know, the city of North Little Rock, uh, along with three of the others, or the county and, and south of the river, two contributors south of the river, uh, that, uh, you know, that because of the fact that the channel is, is on the south side, and, uh, and, and the likelihood of a riverboat docking would be very much on the north side, that, you know, this was a fairly equitable division, and, and that, uh, because of the allocation of funds from our own A and P toward parks, that we could sustain this one.
The move.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0489, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 505 East 9th Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Uh, is this a hearing?
Yes, sir.
Uh, 505 East 9th Street. Anyone caring to comment on 505 East 9th Street regarding a condemnation of that property? Public hearing is now open. Please come to the microphone. Going once, going twice. During public hearing, uh, can we go ahead and vote on it, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, you can.
Uh, do I have a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0490, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1301 West 10th Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Public hearing. Anyone wanna come talk to us on 1301 West 10th Street? Come to the microphone. 1301 West 10th Street. Uh, public hearing is now convened. And not seeing anyone coming forward, now adjourned.
Move for adoption.
Thank you.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0491, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 809 Maple Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
Public hearing is now convened on 809 Maple Street. 809 Maple Street. Anyone wanna come to the microphone? Not seeing anyone coming to the microphone. Public hearing is now adjourned. I have a motion.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0492, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 312 West 13th Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Public hearing now convened on 312-312 West 13th Street. Uh, anyone caring to comment on that property, come to the microphone. Yes, ma'am. State your name and.
Uh, my name is Cassie Brown.
Ms. Brown?
And I'm the owner of that property.
Now, I don't know who's been doing it, but I want to sell that piece of property if I can.
Well, Ms. Brown, we sure want you to sell it to if you can. We don't like to tear down houses, but the problem is, is that our code enforcement department has determined that that house is a public nuisance and that your neighbors to that property are suffering because something needs to be done and, and, uh, Mr. City Attorney, what, our process takes how long now? About at least a month, doesn't it?
Oh, yes, what this says, it probably takes, I'd say, five, six months at least to go through the process. Obviously, if somebody purchased it between then, they have the ability to come back and get a rehab permit within that timeframe.
So, we, what we need to do, Ms. Brown, uh, subject to what the council decides, is, uh, is you will have, uh, a period of, you know, three, four, five, six months, uh, to sell the property and if so, then somebody whoever purchases it might come back and, uh, and essentially put the brakes on this proceeding, but, uh, because of the condition of the property, our, our code department, uh, feels like your neighbors are suffering because no one's doing anything.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, what you saying, give me time that, uh...
Yeah, but the time's running, time will be running, so you won't have, I'd say, I wouldn't feel much comfortable than having more than about ninety days to...
Ninety days.
Ninety days, you may have longer, but, uh, you know, you need to, need to make sure that sign's up or somebody helping, yeah.
Yeah, somebody taking it down, at least two, at least two, I don't know who's doing it, or somebody helping, uh, taking out a sign, a sale sign, I've been putting up there.
Uh, we, we, we need to have a, have a bunch of signs and just put them right back up or add to the paper, or, you know, I can't tell you what you need to do exactly, but, uh, you know, subject to what this council does, you know, we need to move forward because your property's in pretty bad shape.
Yes, it is, I agree. All right, I'll see what can I do here, uh, getting it down or selling it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll, uh, you know, we need to, you, we need to inform, you know, I understand that there's language in here talking about a fine, fine, Mr. City Attorney, is there any thing that does that, uh, we...
Yes, it's part of all these that the city could go after the owners if they don't have them torn down after thirty days and seek a fine, but the city has never chosen to take that course of action.
Well, let's, I mean, well, I don't mind that language staying in there, but if, if we decide to change it, we don't need to change it with Ms. Brown because we didn't inform her of that, so, you know, if, if anybody decides to pursue that, let me know so we can...
Okay. And the, of the hundreds we've condemned, we've never exercised that option.
All right, well, just don't surprise us then.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, start now.
Okay, uh...
Move for adoption.
Is there a second? Thank you, on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Resolution oh four ninety-three, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at fifteen twenty west short seventeenth street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Fifteen twenty, one five two oh, west short seventeenth street, public hearing is now open on that, uh, address, anyone caring to address the com- council on that property, come to the microphone, please. None of hearing? Public hearing's adjourned, have a motion.
Move for adoption.
Thank you. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Resolution oh four ninety-four, Alderman Yielding.
Call it.
A resolution appropriating five hundred thousand dollars from the special projects infrastructure fund for the purchase of an aerial fire truck, rescue boat, truck and trailer.
What's your plan?
Well, I'd like to talk about it.
Well, I'll move for adoption so we can talk about it.
You need to move for adoption.
I'll move for adoption.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, your, your microphone's adjourned.
I had never, would never thought before I ever became an Alderman, that you would have so much trouble trying to buy rescue equipment, fire and rescue equipment for the fire department. You know, we're gonna debate, we can debate whether we have pit bulls or not, we can debate whether we, uh, rezone something, we can debate whether we raise a tax or not raise a tax, but I've followed the fire department ever since I've been, uh, on the city council and before and publics, and issues of public safety, whether they be fire or police, communications, whatever they may be. So, you know, I didn't come up with the fact that we need to buy a new aerial truck or a new boat or, you know, and, and a truck and a trailer to haul it with. These are needs that have been in the budget before and I don't want to put the fire, fire chief, you know, on the, on the spot, I don't even ask for him to come up here, okay? Cause I don't want to put him on the spot. I know he needs it, the firemen know he, that, that he needs this equipment, okay? The need is there and these TV cameras that are here tonight to look at people that want to talk about pit bulls, need to take them down to the central station or down to number fours and look at the boat that we put our guys in to go out on the river to do rescues. And, you know, enough said about that, as far as the funds, where we're getting the money to do this, this city, and rightly so, very smart financially, we did not budget the use tax money that, that we just got back from court, other cities did, I didn't think that was very prudent, very smart to do so, cause if it would've lost, they would've had to pay it back and, uh, and then their budget would've been messed up, plus any money that would've had to be paid back. We didn't do so, so we received a windfall of one point six million dollars. It was not budgeted by the city council, that money just came to us, tax money, people's tax money, we've got it. Now, you know, I understand budgeting, I understand putting stuff in the budget and looking at everything, but we didn't have this money budgeted, we've got the money and there is a need. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to talk about jurisdictional problems, uh, or, or not problems, but jurisdictional questions about the river, we answer calls on the river all the time, every week, for people that either have medical problems or people who are drowning or have drowned or whatever, we have our guys go out there and they need the right equipment to do their job. And nine one one calls, I've got a problem, I need help, we send our guys out there. And what we're sending them out there in now is just a joke, there's no way around it. Like I said, go out there and take a picture of it, go out there and look at it. It's forty years old, a little mercury on it, looks like you're going fishing, Lake Conway, that's what they go out there in. So, if we're gonna continue to send our guys out and women, then we need to send them in something that, that makes sense. I mean, this is the basis of municipal government, it's public safety, streets, things such as that, it's nice to do all the other extra things that we do up here and we've spent eighty thousand dollars tonight to see if we can have a riverboat down there. I hope nobody falls in and needs to get picked up, cause we need it. We've got the aerial truck, the aerial truck nineteen eighty-one model needs to be replaced, has trouble getting even to a fire or a rescue call, much less getting there and extending itself, does not work on numerous occasions. It has been in the budget before, but we haven't done it. I'm all for going through the budget process and looking to see if we need a new road grader or a truck for the animal control or whatever, that, that's fine, but these are public safety needs that we have right now and we have the money to do it, this doesn't even take all the money, there'll still be one point one million dollars left in the budget, left in the fund. Now, I, you know, it's, it's just beyond me that you would argue about such a thing and argue about how to do it and argue about where the money's coming from, it's just beyond me, so, I mean, I'd just like to call a vote and, you know, whatever everybody wants to do, that's fine, but, uh, uh, you know, I mean, this is one of the reasons that people say, oh, it's the gov-, you know, the government, they just don't have any respect or any, anything from the government and what we do or what some, or what some people do, uh, because we want to talk about all these other things that we need to do besides what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, these are needs, we have these needs, we know we have them, we have a windfall of money, you know, thi- this is, this is something that needs to be done, that's all I have to say.
And I've reserved comments for, for...
I'm sure.
Oh, I'm sure you're sure.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, let's roll the vote on this, I don't, I don't want to talk anymore about it, we're not admit, it, it's not, it's not where the needs are, it's the process, we're not appropriating a half a million dollars, we're appropriating nine hundred thousand dollars because section two throws another four hundred dollars that comes out of next year's budget, that we haven't even had the opportunity to look at the entire needs of the city. And so, uh, I don't know if there's an expedient way I, I could, I could move to limit debate and, and go to immediate to the motion.
Well, we're gonna, you know, without objection, we're gonna go to a vote, but I'm gonna make a quick comment on this, you know, first of all, you know, Alderman Yielding seems to express some astonishment, uh, that, you know, that, that this administration doesn't take public safety seriously, you know, I wanna, I wanna tell him, you know, that he's just backwards as much as he can be on, on that issue, you know, our, our fire department is, 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 is extremely, uh, you know, well-equipped and when we talk about dangers in terms of, of lack of equipment, uh, we don't take that, uh, laying down and we don't take it, uh, any way other than extremely serious, public safety is the top thing that we consider. The other thing, Alderman, is that we consider, you know, the balanced needs of this community and, and as I discussed with you on several occasions about this legislation, we are right in the middle of a budget season, uh, this community has a number of needs, we have police, we have fire, we have, uh, uh, our public works department and we also have the future of this community. We have a responsibility, I have a responsibility under Arkansas law to recommend a budget to this council and this council has a responsibility within two months of that recommendation to act on it. My job is to evaluate the request of, of department heads as they come in, uh, I spend very, a lot of hours in going through those various needs and I make a recommendation to this council based on going back and forth with each of those department heads, talking to the police chief, the fire chief, you know, the public works director, and those recommendations I've been doing for sixteen years, or this will be the sixteenth one that I recommend. This council has the ability to adopt that, amend it and do whatever they please, is prudent, but in, in taking this out of line and in taking this kind of allocation before I've had a chance, uh, to deal directly with Chief McCall or Chief Bradley or anyone else that wants to come before us, uh, as we've done in the past to make a, a public hearing and to comment on the budget, to me is entirely inappropriate and certainly without prudence in terms of the way that this government ought to be run. So, while, you know, while you may have your, uh, opinion as to the, uh, impropriety of what we're doing, I have a tremendous amount of, of concern about the impropriety of the approach that you're recommending, that we take such a large allocation before these department heads have a chance to make their case, before I've had a chance to make a recommendation and when we commit ourselves to such a large expenditure of funds, you know, I'm not sitting here saying that I, that this recommendation is not gonna be in the budget, I am not committing either way, but I am committing, just like I've done every year, to go through the request and, and to try to balance those in the need that I think most aptly addresses this community's future. And the second thing with regard to the boat, you know, that, that is the first time that I've heard a request on that, uh, we have a, a vehicle out there and as I told you earlier today, as well as when we talked, uh, a week and a half ago, the jurisdiction over that river is placed with the county, the county I know has the arrest powers and I'm not sure, you know, whether or not they might also have the rescue responsibility and, and at the very minimum, the largest half of that river population-wise and at this moment, perhaps even, uh, even activity-wise, uh, is on the south side and in my mind, they have a responsibility as well as us to address those issues that happen on the river and, and I am going to make a point to determine whether or not, you know, we do have the first call responsibility and if so, you know, what we're gonna do to address it, if not, how to divide that responsibility that can best address those questions. I haven't had a chance to say one word, not one word, to Chief McCall about the boat. Now, I have talked about the, uh, the, the ladder truck, but I haven't had a chance to say one word and to address this at this time, I think is entirely inappropriate and, and without merit, so I urge the, uh, the, uh, a vote against Alderman Yielding's legislation.
Now, I'm gonna hold it right now and change some things and bring it back.
He has that right. Next item?
Ordinance oh four fifty-six, Mayor Hayes and Alderman Gibson.
Hold it, please.
You want to read it and hold it?
Just read it one time, I guess we need to read it one time, we, I will, let's read it one time then, I got a couple of comments about the earlier meeting today.
This is an ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Little Rock for a police pension and relief fund, fire pension and relief fund, the municipal library fund and the North Little Rock general fund, first reading.
The spin rules, place on second reading.
Uh, as, as I say, uh, this is something we do every year, no raising taxes, this is pretty much a procedure that, or not pretty much, this is a procedure the council does every year to, uh, continue supporting those funds with the same amount of property tax. Uh, just a second, uh, let's get the one, on this vote, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
This is an ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property within the city
of North Little Rock for a police pension and relief fund, fire pension and relief fund, the municipal library fund and the North Little Rock general fund, first reading.
The spin rules, place on second reading.
Uh, as, as I say, uh, this is something we do every year, no raising taxes, this is pretty much a procedure that, or not pretty much, this is a procedure the council does every year to, uh, continue supporting those funds with the same amount of property tax. Uh, just a second, uh, let's get the one, on this vote, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
This is...
Go ahead.
This is an ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Little Rock for the police pension and relief fund, the fire pension and relief fund, the municipal library fund and the North Little Rock general fund, second reading.
Just a second, Alderman Thomas.
I guess the question I had, somebody asked me, um, does it matter how, how the, the vote went, when we voted, uh, I guess, I think or so ago, it didn't matter how the vote occurred, that still, still applies, is that right? Cause that was on the, on the ballot, I guess, in that one.
That's school district stuff, that, that's all school, this is, this is the fire and police pension fund, the library fund and general fund, has nothing to do with the school fund.
But, but the, on, on school, it didn't matter either how we voted there, did it?
I don't know, I can't answer that.
Okay.
I know that we do, you know, we, you know, this is one of the pro forma things that we do to allocate those, I don't think that the tax rate would go down if we didn't do this, I think it'd just hang there, but I'm not sure.
But, uh, the reason I said that, I, I'm not sure either, cause they asked, that question was asked me and I said, I, I really don't know and I've been on here quite a while, but I didn't know just exactly what...
Yeah, those are what's levied by the school district, this is what's been approved by the voters of North Little Rock and then every year we have to re, uh, state by ordinance that this is what the voters have approved, we send it to the county so they can assess it.
I'll try to explain, I won't be able to...
Mr. Thomas, I think I can, if I understand the school situation, say there's thirty-five mills and they bring in something to raise it to thirty-eight, if, if it fails, it's, they still collect thirty-five. In this case, they, they have to come back every two years, I guess it is, or whatever the term is, they, and, and ask the people, and even if they don't have a, a rise in taxes and if the people vote against it, the taxes stay the same, if they vote for it, they stay the same.
Well, I know that, uh, and I appreciate that, but it, it was hard for me to try to, they thought I ought to be able to explain that and I just couldn't do that because I didn't know just how it went.
They make sure taxes don't go down.
Motion to spin the rules.
Move for adoption.
Thank you. On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance oh four fifty-eight, Alderman Gibson.
Second.
And it's just, it's just a question of formality, uh, I know, we know we're gonna do this every year, yet we still do an emergency clause on it, is there anything special for that? I mean, is, we want it to take effect immediately, but, uh, should we, if, if we did do, it's just something that we do, right?
It's, it's something that's already in effect, it's not changing anything that's out there, but the, the county requires that this be there at a certain time so they can do their assessments for next year and the tax bill you get in February.
Okay.
Mr. City Attorney, I mean, if, if, if we didn't do this, would the tax rate drop?
Uh, I, I'm not sure, I'd have to look it up, what I believe would happen is all these funds would lose this money just period.
Do I?
Would lose this money period, each of the particular funds, all these taxes that have been approved by the voters, we have to file this each year with the county, who they then certify it and assess it to the records, I, I'm not a hundred percent on that, I have to research it, but I believe we'd just lose and all these funds, the library would lose their money.
Yeah, and, and, and it, it probably is good, good to know, you know, but, you know, one of two things would happen, I mean, obviously we do this for a reason and, and the reason, as I would understand it, is that whether the millage rates stay, may stay the same, if that's the case, then these funds would lose those, those monies and that would stay in the fund somewhere in the county, or, you know, the tax rate would drop, one of the two, you know, to me appears to happen and, you know, as, as a result of that, we're asked to, to reassess this, it was approved by a vote of people, uh, and, you know, and that's an annual requirement that we need to do, uh, you know, obviously it's, it's something that, that I would support and I, this council has done it every time I've been here, these funds are, uh, are, are ones that, you know, are committed and, uh, and are essential for, you know, what this community feels is priority, so...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we restructure this mill last year, didn't we, or the year before last?
The voters increased the mill for the library.
They increased it, but didn't we, okay, the voters increased it, okay, all right, all right.
Now, we did not do any, we have not done anything with this.
I'm not talking about increasing, I just thought we realac, I mean, re...
No, we didn't readjust it, I mean, the same, the same allocation has always been there.
Okay.
All right, next item?
Ordinance oh four fifty-eight, Alderman Gibson.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance levying a special use for a daycare in R three zone for certain real property located nine oh six west twenty-fifth street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Mayor, I want to take the third reading, I've got a couple of questions for...
All right, I take the rules, place it on second reading. Second?
Thank you.
On the motion, spin the rules.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance levying a special use for a daycare in R three zone for certain real property located at nine oh six west twenty-fifth street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Motion to spin the rules?
Yes.
Second. On the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance levying a special use for daycare in R3 zone for certain real property located at 906 West 25th Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
Alderman Gibson?
Mr. Wallace, this was an expansion of the one that was next door, it's two different ones. It doesn't mention anything about the driveway requirements, are they going to somehow use the one driveway requirement to handle the two buildings?
I believe there's a driveway on the east side of this building that'll serve the younger children, but they do drop off on 25th Street.
Okay, I just don't want them to think they can use that piece of an alley that's in behind that for getting in and getting out.
I don't believe that's the plan.
Okay, because it's not, it's strictly a piece of an alley. Okay.
Motion to adopt the third rule?
Yes.
Second. On the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0459, Alderman Bestel?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance levying a special use for a bolt and trailer storage in a R3 zone for certain real property located at 3700 Crutcher in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Please suspend the rules, place it on-
At one, some point, I have one question to ask.
Motion made, second, suspend the rules, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance levying a special use for a bolt and trailer storage in a R3 zone for certain real property located at 3700 Crutcher in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Move, suspend the rules, place your ordinance on the third reading?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance levying a special use for a bolt and trailer storage in a R3 zone for certain real property located at 3700 Crutcher in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
Alderman Gibson?
You know, I'm sure that was debated very much within planning, but I really have a problem with seven-foot fences with barbed wire on top of them in almost any area, in particular one that's, we're special using from R3, which means they're-
Eight-foot.
Is that a necessary item for this?
Well, Alderman, the yard, this area is in basically a floodway, and basically the city bought this property at one point and removed the structure down. And then, we currently sold it to-
Waco.
Waco Manufacturing, and there is no, there's not, the only thing it's going to be used for is, is storage of boats. And there's no security there where it is, and it's sort of offset from their current location, from where their offices are, where their employees are. So, I mean, you know, I'm sure the applicant is here. If you have any questions-
If he was discussed in planning, the-
The planning department required this, did they not?
Barbed, not the barbed wire.
No, we did not require, they're requesting this. The barbed wire is the issue, and that was requested of the applicant.
Well, then we've got it listed as one of the conditions, well, for approval.
No, no, it's not a condition of approval, it, it's, it's actually a special use, because we, you have to have an ordinance to have the barbed wire. So, we're, and basically, what we're doing is, is special use in the use, and special use in them to allow them to have the seven-foot fence with barbed wire on top of it.
I know, you know, I had a, had and still continue to have a problem, you know, with visibility and barbed wire. Mr. Wallace, how visible is this fence to the, you know, to the motoric public?
Well, to the west of this property is industrial, this is a residential area on 37th Street, there are houses, you know, to the northeast, and, you know, about, they own, they own the property here, it's not a busy area, but it will be in view of the neighbors. This fence would be on the property line, and of course, they requested barbed wire. You could take that off and allow maybe an eight-foot fence, maybe that would satisfy, but they were requesting that.
Is the applicant here? Uh, yeah, I know, I know that, you know, that that is, is an ongoing concern, you know, I recognize that some people feel a little safer, you know, with that, but still, you know, this, this city's not a prison camp, and I'm, I'm real, you know, I'm real concerned about, you know, that, and whether or not it really is beneficial to the extent of what some people feel. I, I would be much more comfortable with even a higher fence, but without the barbed wire, certainly not razor wire. And if they're protecting the boats, is that what they're protecting, the, you know, the storage of boats?
Yes, there's a boat storage here.
I don't, I don't know that getting a boat over an eight-foot fence or a seven-foot fence is going to be helped by razor wire.
Alderman Bestel can hold it, barbed wire.
Barbed wire.
We can just clear it out.
Well, it might even in fact help get it over the barbed wire, get it up to the top of the fence.
It might be better to have a chain link, and it would be, but who knows?
Aluminum flat-bottom boats are the target.
Well, it's also, you're not talking about just a flat-bottom boat.
Oh, I know.
Okay, you're talking about a boat that's got, some of them have got as much as six, seven thousand dollars of electronic equipment in those boats. So, and, you know, if, if, I mean, we allow, we've allowed this down on East Broadway before, to protect the value of the property that's inside that fence. And, you know, and-
Where, where is that, Robert, where, we got barbed wire on East Broadway?
We normally send that to the board of adjustment on fence issues on Broadway, but there are a lot of fences on Broadway.
We're not talking about fences, we're talking about barbed wire fences.
There's, I would think there are barbed wire on top of several of those businesses.
Oh, there are, I mean, I just, I hate to add to the issue, I know, and if it's a major, if you're going to call it, I'm going to, I'm going to pass on it, that's okay, I mean, I just, but I just want you, I just absolutely try not to do it under any circumstances. I've got enough problem with the eight-foot fences we're allowing in neighborhoods right now, so.
One question, Mr. City Attorney, you're probably closer to this subject than me if I say it, if somebody was going to steal a boat out of that facility, are they more likely to try to take that boat over the top of that fence or cut a hole? Yeah, it's the equipment, I think all the boats are trying to get out of there.
Yes.
Be honest with you, Alderman, I'm not an expert in stealing boats. True, too much.
Well, I mean, you're probably closer to it than I am.
But it's, it's one clearly, I mean, somebody could use that as a basis to help, you know, curve it up and get it over there, certainly. But I haven't tried that in a while, I'll admit.
Yeah, I, I hate that the applicant's not here, you know, because I would, I would prefer a foot higher fence than, than the razor wire, or not the razor wire, the barbed wire. I mean, you may not need, you know, may not need my vote, you know, may not have an opportunity, but I, as present, I'd want to ask-
We could approve it with a seven-foot fence, and if, and if the applicant wants to come back with an eight-foot request or a barbed wire request, separate issue, and-
I make a motion that we do that.
Make a motion that it be amended to-
Then we strike barbed wire.
A seven-foot chain link fence and strike with barbed wire.
Correct.
Atop the seven-foot fence.
Correct.
All right, there's a motion to amend, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
On the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
I'll just pass.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
We will adopt the amended.
Second.
On the motion to adopt the amended?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0460, Alderman Gibson?
Okay, call it, please.
This is an ordinance rezoning certain property located at 600 West 22nd Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from a C4 to R3 zone by amendment ordinance number 3171 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Mayor, let me explain this before we go. As a condition of a rezon for a daycare center, we found that over in the middle of a residential area was a piece of C4 property, and so this is taking it from C4. We've already approved a daycare center some time ago, but now this is the, it's taking it away from C4 and taking it down to R3.
It's kind of like downgrading?
That's, that's actually major.
And I take that comment as a motion to suspend the rules? Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to suspend the rules?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at 600 West 22nd Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from C4 to R3 zone by amendment ordinance number 3171 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Move, suspend the rules, place it on the third reading? Motion made, second, and Alderman Gibson, on the motion?
Gibson, yes, Gibson, Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at 600 West 22nd Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from C4 to R3 zone by amendment ordinance number 3171 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0461, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Gibson and Berry?
Please call it, and I think we want it read once.
This is an ordinance creating a North, North Rock municipal code, section 1046, prohibiting pit bull breeds of dogs within the city of North Rock, first reading.
As I told the council last week, that I was going to work with the director of the animal control, Mr. Grace, you want to start coming to the microphone, Billy? And, you know, first determined whether or not we thought there might be a need, and if so, what animal control was going to recommend, and this is Mr. Grace's recommendation. You know, I want to, if I read the editorial in our, in our North Rock Times, I misunderstood Mr. Grace's legislation, because this did not prohibit, as I understand it, Mr. Grace, pit bulls in the city of North Little Rock. It does place a variety of, well, not recommendations, restrictions on how those pit bulls may be retained in the city, and, and increases a requirement that they obtain insurance, that, you know, that they register and have a special registration with their animal by, by way of a tattoo, and several other things with the length of the leash, and, you know, things that, that go in that direction. So, you know, if you just take a quick moment and summarize your recommendation, as I mentioned, it is not my intent to call this legislation, I will call a public hearing for the next city council meeting. If anyone is here, they're welcome to make a brief comment, I'm going to save any extensive comments for the next council meeting during the public hearing, but because you're here, I don't want to exclude any comments from being made, just asking you, whoever makes comments, to keep them within a two- to three-minute timeframe, and then feel free to come back. In the next council meeting, if anyone has any reason to delay the vote, then I will be happy to wait until the succeeding council meeting, which would be the last one in October, before I call it for a vote. So, not saying that it's not possible, we may not vote, certainly, we have an opportunity, I would entertain an opportunity even this time, if anyone has any desire to try, to offer a suggestive amendment, but if not, you know, we can look to amending, and then either voting, or if anybody wants to delay, I would delay it, certainly be happy to delay it until the last council meeting in October. Mr. Grace, with that introduction, please just give us a brief summary of this legislation.
I think you pretty well covered most of them, Mayor, with the exception of sterilization, we are asking for sterilization of the animal, but we're, we're not out to take anyone's pit bull, anyone's licensed, legal pit bull that's not causing any problem, that, that's not what this is about. We don't want to take anyone's pet away from them. We do have a problem with some people that misuse them, misbreed them, and fight them, and that's the, that's the problem we're trying to address.
Any council member have any questions, Alderman Robinson?
Well, I'm confused.
Okay.
Looking at the legislation, it's just, section 1046 says banning of pit bull breeds of dogs, so I assume that we were going to vote on banning pit bulls in the city of North Little Rock.
Well, we, in a sense, it, it's going to, it's going to ban some pit bulls, the majority of pit bulls that we deal with now are not sterilized, and they're not friendly dogs at all. We're going after those, we're not going out to take anybody's good dog away from them, that's not what it's about. If, if they're licensed at the time when the ordinance passes away, I understand this, and if they, if they have the dog spayed or neutered and bring it to animal control And if they have the dog spayed or neutered and bring it to animal control so we can identify it with an animal control number, or they can take it to a licensed veterinarian if they choose to do so and have a number put on it, then it's, you know, it can live out its days here. We're not out to take a good dog away from anyone.
I think the way it might read, and I'll take a quick look at it, but it bans pit bulls that aren't licensed.
Yes, sir.
But though, and then it provides a certain registration procedure for those that want to stay in the city. And if they comply with the stipulations that are made in the legislation, then the animal control will issue them a license which will permit them to remain in the city.
I have another question, and I don't know if I should ask it now or later. But regarding the pit bulls, I noticed that the ordinance has like a $100,000, we're talking about liability insurance, and is that $100,000 per dog? Because some people own two or three pit bulls. So, is it $100,000 per dog or just, you know?
I'm gonna defer that question to the city attorney. I don't know. I think that is a minimal amount of coverage, though, with most people's homeowner's insurance.
Per dog?
I think it's, I don't know, but I think most of them will have, I think mine has three or 400,000, if I'm not mistaken.
My reading of it as written, $100,000 would cover if you have two, three, or four dogs. Of course, we prohibit five or more, but if you, no matter how many you had, one policy would cover multiple dogs.
Any other questions? Alderman Yelich?
Okay, so, this does not ban the dogs.
It bans unsterilized, unlicensed dogs.
Or vicious dogs, or dogs that you're not going to give a license to. Right.
Right. And the majority of them out there now do not have a license.
Okay. All right, so if, so if someone owns a good pit bull, that don't have any problem with it, and they moved here from San Antonio, then they can come get their license and keep their dog?
You know, that's another point I guess we need to address. I'll defer that also to the city attorney. Do we grandfather them into if they've just moved here with a dog?
The way it's written right in, they would not be grandfathered in. You have 30 days after it's adopted to get it registered. At that point, any dog's grandfathered in. But we certainly can amend Section, Paragraph C to clarify whatever the council's intent is on that.
Let me, you know, just indicate that I would support, if one is going to have these restrictions, and someone moves in, I would support, you know, not only grandfathering those that are here, but also under these licensure provisions to allow, you know, future animals that might come in to do so under these stipulations. So, that's an amendment that I know I would certainly consider supporting subject to council's direction.
Yeah, I think if it's a question, of course, you know, I don't think you ought to ban a breed entirely. I mean, I did a lot of research on it, and, you know, I've found about, you know, the Pomeranian that killed the baby, okay? In Canada, they think Golden Retrievers are bad, okay? And Rottweilers, you know, were mentioned, and not pit bulls, not that much, you know? So, it just depends. But the best ordinances that I have found that make the most sense are the ones that leave the animal control director and their staff the ability to not give a license to a dog if they declared a vicious dog. And, you know, that, I think if someone's going to bring a dog in and it's okay, then, you know, then they can give it a license. And then there probably needs to be, it may, this may be in some of the other, some of the previous legislation, but, you know, some type of, you know, A B C if the dog does this that gives the animal control department a right to not give the, not license to the dog. So, we probably need to look at that. And I got, I had some examples, but I didn't, I forgot to bring them tonight, but I didn't, I knew we weren't going to vote on it tonight. But anyway, you know what I'm talking about. Can you talk, can you?
The only thing wrong with waiting until we declare them vicious, we have to have evidence, and usually by then the damage is done. I think last year, what have we been on, declared 20 dogs vicious. I think 13 of them were pit bulls. I mean, that's back to a case-by-case basis, and there, if you're asking my opinion, I think there are just too many out there to deal with them on a case-by-case basis. And these people don't, the people that we're trying to target here, you're not going to scare them with a citation. They will not neuter the animal.
Okay. No, no, I'm agreeing with, with what you're saying to handle the ones that are here now. But I'm talking about if people come in with dogs, then you're going to have to look at those dogs and make a determination whether or not those dogs are okay. And so, this is not a blanket ban, we're not going to have them regardless. And so, that's, and as far as I'm concerned, that's good. So, could that be something that, you understand what I'm saying? That could be something we look at on the people that bring the dogs in, and they could be looked at on a case-by-case basis. But as far as cleaning up the bad ones that we have now, you know, they've got to get their licenses and go through all this.
Take whatever comments are here and visit with the city attorney's office in case we want to try to put something like that in an amendment format. Alderman Hite?
I just, a couple of things, wondering if we could add some language in here as to the gate that may be on the structure that's holding the animal? If it could be added, make sure that a strong spring-loaded gate is on there to ensure that that gate, should it come unlocked, would stay closed?
Sure. I don't see a problem with it. The city attorney doesn't?
We can, the city attorney, just put, let me just ask that we not try to do any amendments and, you know, try to deal with those next time, and then we can see where we want to go overall. But let's work toward any amendments at the next council meeting.
And one other thing, too, is on Section C, Number 6, you, the owner shall present to the North Hill Animal Shelter proof that the owner has procured liability insurance in the amount of at least $100,000. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
I assume the standard homeowner's policy would cover that.
There are some insurance companies out there now that if they find their owners, the homeowners that do have certain breeds of animals, they're going to cancel their insurance or they're not going to write them any new insurance. My insurance company is one of those.
They usually do that for a reason. Any other comments? Alderman Vestal?
Now, on the section where the animals are beyond a leash or in a locked security area, fence, pen, I know a lot of dog owners have dog runs that are actually the overhead wires that the dogs attach to. Are those permissible?
Well, they're permissible now. I assume they are, that's, but...
Because they're not, I mean, we're very specific in this, and they're not listed.
Well, that would be going above and beyond what we're requiring, the dog run. Because the way I understand this ordinance, there are a lot of good people who let their pit bull run loose in their backyard and never cause any problems. We don't want to penalize those people, that's, and I...
I think what Alderman Vestal said is a clothesline with a chain.
It's a clothesline.
Kind of running back and forth type of...
Yes, there's the overhead, there's the, an overhead... I misunderstood you. I don't think that would be permissible under this ordinance.
If the dog is not inside a fence.
Right, it has to be inside a fenced area, a locked gate. That's my understanding. Because I know several people have those.
Yeah, I think, correct us if we're wrong, Mr. City Attorney, but the legislation requires a fence.
That's correct. That's correct.
And also, in Section D, Paragraph 6, basically under this, the first section of that says that we're not going to allow them, even if it's a licensed animal, sell it to somebody else that lives in the city of North Little Rock unless they reside at the same residence as the person that they're buying it from.
That's correct. Okay.
What we're generally talking about, I think, is perhaps permitting that, but obviously, they would have to then, those people would have to obtain a license. If we're indeed going to allow people to move in to obtain a license, then someone who sells from one to the other, to me, would also fall into that group.
Could I win my transfer license?
Not sure where they came from, but it is in there that if they sell the animal, they cannot sell it to someone else in North Little Rock.
Well, we'd have to deal with that, you know, Mr. City Attorney. We certainly wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to allow someone coming in from outside and bring their animal in, and then prohibit someone from inside from selling their animal to someone who's a resident.
That's right.
I mean, that probably would even be better because we'd have some history on that animal and living in the city. Any other comments? All right, let me, let me go ahead and open it for short discussion. I know that there are those that are here that are interested in this. If I could ask you to be brief, you know, I'm not going to put a time limit on you, but anyone that wants to come and offer a comment, please feel free to do so.
First time I've ever been to anything like this. So, I am a dog trainer, 35 years experience, and a member of Little Rock Dog Training Club. There's many people in this community that have brought me dogs, Yorkshire Terriers, Dobermans...
Excuse me, Fred Ruffin, we'd love to know what your name is.
Janine.
Last name?
Neil.
Okay.
And they've brought me dogs from Russellville and all over, all breeds that have actually either attacked themselves, the owner, or attacked other dogs. I have worked with people, and I have helped many people with different breeds of dogs. After 35 years of working with dogs, there pretty much is not a breed that I would call aggressive. Within each breed, I find that the dog's personality, whether it has been bred or inbred or the owner, that's where the responsibility lies. What I don't agree with on this ordinance is it specifically is going after one breed, being pit bulls or American Staffordshire Terriers or any of the bully breeds. That's what I'm not agreeing on at all. I think that people are responsible for their dogs. They should, there should be an ordinance that no matter what breed of dog that you have, that if I am bit by, only a German Shepherd I'm using as an example, there should or to attack your family. Don't go breed specific. That's what I'm asking for, is don't go breed specific. As a dog trainer, every nine weeks, I get a whole new group of puppies for the past 12 years in there. That's puppies. I have never had a pit bull in there yet that has bit me, bitten owner, or bit another dog. I have had many other breeds, from all the breeds that we accept and love and think are fuzzy and wonderful, that have bit or attempted to bite. I'm asking that we just don't go breed specific. I'm asking that we do what Little Rock does and just look at the dog and look at the case as an individual. And as a dog trainer, that's what I would do. Because I will say this, people who think it's fun to fight dogs, people that think it's fun to use dogs for protection, so what? This is, they're just go from the pit bull, and they'll go on to another breed. You can't stop people that think that this is something that they enjoy doing. They've never been able to stop them from fighting. So, I just suggest that we don't go breed specific. Just keep it open to, and make the fine heavier, if that's what it takes. Punish the people. Don't punish the dog. Because I did ask questions, and if I have a pit bull, she can stay, but I can't get another one. I'm a dog trainer, and if I choose to have a pit bull, I should have that right to have a pit bull. So, that's all I'm asking is, don't go after the breed, okay?
And let me, let me again underline, we're not going to vote on it tonight. We're open to a floor for quick comments, but if you're going to be here next council meeting, I'd ask that you wait until the next council meeting to comment, okay?
And is there something that I can bring you, an ordinance from Little Rock or Hot Springs? Hot Springs, Pine Bluff, they have fought, and they don't go breed specific. So, if I would bring something like that to present to you, how their ordinance reads, would that help?
You're certainly welcome to come back the next council meeting. Each one of these council members is available for discussion, so it's certainly up to you however you want to present.
Okay. But would that be something that I should give to the council for them to look at as far as a suggestion?
You're certainly welcome to do that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mayor, how are you? My name is Jesse Kendrick. We praised some people earlier for being from North Little Rock for a long time. My family goes back to the late 1800s in North Little Rock. I live on West 9th. My father and mother live on West 10th. My grandfather and grandmother live on West 11th. And I want to tell you, first of all, that the term pit bull is a nickname, and what it does, it's allowing people to use that term to label American pit bull terriers and dogs that resemble them or are derivatives of them, or dogs that they're derivatives of, to be labeled into that. I own a breed of dog called an American Bulldog, and I'm a Bulldog fan. I like pit bulls. I don't like Golden Retrievers. I don't want one. And what I'm trying to say is that I spoke to Mr. Grace earlier today a little bit and kind of come to grips with the fact that he just wants to not have to deal with them anymore. He looks very unsure up here to me about what he's doing. And also, what I read from that is what she just said. It sounds like I get to keep my dog if I'm a responsible owner, but when my dog's gone, I don't get to get another one unless I get a Golden Retriever.
That's not true.
That's the way that, the way that I, that's what my perception was. If I'm not right, then, then fine.
That's not accurate under the legislation.
What I'd like to, what I'd like to say is, is that breed-specific legislation is nationwide and worldwide, and people have tried to do it, and it's only successful in very small, tight-knit, cliquey communities like Sherwood and Marmell, which are basically defectos of North Little Rock, okay? And I really would hope that we don't take a small-town mentality to this. The people that he is talking about are people that don't register their dogs anyway. Only the people that register their dogs, only the people that have North Little Rock licenses that we have to pay for are going to suffer from this, okay? The people that he's talking about, and when I talked to him on the phone, he's, you know, we're talking about the gang bangers, people fighting the dogs. I don't know what your view is of me stereotypically, but I live in a neighborhood where you might see some of that, and it kind of makes me wonder what his perception is. I'd also like to say that on a very regular basis, I see these two ladies right here parked behind my house in the alley watching my dogs. And my dogs are not aggressive. They are cautious, and they are supremely well-trained. And I will not fix my dogs, not because I don't want to stop breeding them or that I do want to breed them, I just don't believe in that. And being a person that's from North Little Rock, and my family's from North Little Rock, if this goes to effect, I'll move to Little Rock and I'll take, you know, I'll take my business elsewhere.
Thank you.
I'm William Fisher Senior. My son spoke at the last, you know, meeting when we had the thing come up. Basically, we're just, they've said most of it. I mean, it's breed-specific is wrong. You know, it shouldn't be breed-specific. Any dog can be vicious, any dog can be gentle. It's how they're brought up, how they're trained, how they're done. I've got one at home. He sleeps in her bed, you know, he takes baths, he eats at her, you know, beside her table. He's the nicest pit bull you'd ever see. Anyone that you can come over there, at most he'll do is lick you to death. I mean, that's the most he'll do. He's the nicest dog there's ever been. And I just don't think breed-specific is the wrong thing to do. Most of the rulings that they've got in here about the licensing, the having them be in their shots and all that, that's already on the record. You know, if you have a dog in city limits, you're supposed to have all that anyway. All that's supposed to be done. You're supposed to keep your dogs inside. You're supposed to keep your dogs on leashes. All that's there. You're supposed to do that. You're not supposed to let dogs just run wild, you know? So, I mean, we need to get more specific, like I say, on the people that are raising them wrong. The people that are raising them to be mean are people that want them to be mean. I mean, I know people that's that way, that they want their dog. They have pit bulls, they have Chows, I mean, they train them to be that way. They want them to be that way. But, you know, we have a lot of people in this city that don't want the dogs that way. We want pets. We want, you know, that are gentle and good. And that's just what I want everybody to look at. Don't be breed-specific. Make the rules for, to cover the bad ones and the bad people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Graham Sloan, and I'm here in my capacity as a resident in Little Rock and a dog lover. And I want to say that breed-specific legislation is not the answer. There's no breed dog out there that inherently vicious or bad. How a dog acts depends on how it's been trained. And unfortunately, there's a group of people out there who want mean dogs. The meaner they are, the better they are, and they've trained some of these dogs to be mean. And if you take those breeds of dogs away from those people, they're not going to go out to the animal shelter and adopt cats. They're going to go out there and get Rottweilers and Dobermans and German Shepherds. More people go to the emergency room and bit by German Shepherds than any other breed of dog. And so, you've got a group of owners out there that's the problem, not the dogs. And so, punish the deed, not the breed. And then if you're gonna pass breed-specific legislation, there's absolutely positively no reason in the world to put the American Staffordshire Terrier on that list. The American Staffordshire Terriers are breed of dogs recognized by the American Kennel Club. Those are the folks that hold the Westminster Dog Show. You've seen it on TV. They've been breeding those dogs for 75 years. The last thing in the world they want is for a dog at one of their shows to attack either another dog, to attack a judge, attack somebody in the audience. So, what evidence, and come forward and tell me if there's any, do you have that one person in the city of North Little Rock has ever been bitten by an American Staffordshire Terrier registered with the American Kennel Club? And you're not going to find it. And then, beyond that, if you were to decide, well, gee, we need to include those breeds in that ban, then my point would be that, if you need to include them in legislation, a ban's not the answer. There's a group called the American Temperament Test Society. It's been existed for 27 years. They've conducted over 960 tests. They've certified over 25,000 dogs. So, there's a group out there that's set up for the sole purpose of testing dogs, testing them for aggressiveness to see if they're going to bite or not. And so, fine, make people that have these breeds of dogs go out there and get them tested by that group. And if a dog can pass that test, why in the world can't you own it? And then, beyond that, let's say you're going to pass breed-specific legislation, you're going to include those dogs in it, I'm just going to say for the record that that grandfather clause is meaningless. I called an insurance independent agent today. They said they've never heard of dog bite insurance. Councilman Hite was right, any homeowner's company is going to exclude you from coverage on that. So, it's, there is no $100,000 dog bite insurance policy. And to place that requirement on somebody is in essence a taping. And I ask you, what's more dangerous, a car or a dog? And I would venture to say, most people sitting up there would say a car. How many people have been killed by cars this year? A bunch. How many people in North Little Rock have been killed by dogs? None. And what does the law require of a car owner? It requires that car owner to carry $25,000 worth of insurance. And tell me what's the justification for making a dog owner carry four times more insurance on his dog than the driver has to carry on his car? And there's not, so it's arbitrary and capricious. And if this legislation gets passed, I can feel certain that it's going to be challenged. And, you know, if y'all want to bite that, that's your choice, but I don't think that's a wise use of taxpayer money. And that concludes my remarks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name's Johnny Holt, and I've been a resident in North Little Rock since I was one years old. My parents moved here in 1968. Basically, everyone has said everything that needs to be said tonight, except for one personal aspect. I've had many breeds of dogs. I've had a German Shepherd, Akita, many mutts. For two and a half years, I've had an American Bull Terrier. And like the other shape gentleman stated, pit bull is a nickname or slur, if you will. It's just so people can say pit. The proper name of them is the American Bull Terrier. My little Bull Terrier is two and a half years old, and I've had her since she was eight weeks old. I've put diapers on her when she's been in heat. I've fed her every day. She has her license. I came here tonight to see if y'all were going to force me to give up my daughter, who I consider my daughter, my pet. I have no children of my own, I'm not married. But I came here tonight to see if y'all were going to try and make me give up my daughter or have me move out of the city after being here 36 years. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You know, legislation does not ban, does not ban the dogs.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Sloan. I heard you mention, I believe, Article D that said if a person owns the Bull Terrier, they cannot sell it to anyone else in North Little Rock unless they move out of their house and that person moves into their house, that the bull stays right there. That is what I heard said.
Well, we're talking, I mean, and obviously, the legislation says that now. We're talking about amending that at the next council meeting.
Right. But as the dog trainer mentioned, she wouldn't be able to, you made the statement affirming that she would be able to buy another Bull Terrier, but yet, if she found one in North Little Rock, I realize you're going to amend it now, but as it reads now, if she were to find one in North Little Rock that is trained well, that is not aggressive, that can pass the canine good citizenship test, or be a therapy dog even, which mine is up for therapy registration. If she found one in North Little Rock, she wouldn't be able to buy it, as the legislation reads now.
Right.
Thank you.
My name's Sandy Dolberg. I'm a dog groomer from Little Rock, and I'm, sorry, I'm just a little nervous. To make a statement, I'd like to say that the most, quote, vicious dogs that I have ever groomed happen to be the small dogs, namely, Pomeranians and my, my own groomer was filleted open by a schnauzer years ago. I have never had a problem with my own dog, which is an American Staffordshire Terrier. I also own a pug. And I have to say that, sorry, I'm about to, scattered right now. I have to say that I would not, like the other man said, own a Golden Retriever. I would not own a Lab. I would own a, I would own an Amstaff or an American Pit Bull Terrier because of the loyalty and the temperament that they have. Their temperament is higher than a Golden Retrievers and a Labrador Retrievers. If, if this, this ban is, not ban, I'm sorry, if this ordinance is to go into effect, it needs to be more, not breed-specific, but more towards a dangerous dog ordinance. If, now, the tattooing is okay, that needs to be done more for every dog. That'd be fine if you had that, added that for every dog, but not just for one specific breed. The, if you're going to do something with pit bulls, there also needs to be something done with German Shepherds, Rottweilers, Dobermans, Akitas, St. Bernards, Mastiffs, Bulldogs, American Bulldogs, Yorkies, Pomeranians, Chows, any other breed that would be considered a danger. Because pit bulls just, I cannot express, I cannot fully express in my heart how I feel towards my own son. And he happens to have been a dog that was used for pit bull baiting. He survived to come out to be one of the best dogs I have ever owned. And I would, because of his temperament, on another pit bull or Amstaff.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Brent Rogers. I was born here in North Little Rock, raised here in North Little Rock. Basically, everybody's made some really good points. What I want to address is to do with the actual bill as it was presented. It's kind of a broad thing, but I would like to know who would be brought in to determine that the dog is actually a quote-unquote pit bull. There seems... There seems to be a great misconception that dogs that have certain characteristics are immediately lumped into that pit bull area. And I, I would like to see if it's re-amended and some things changed with the law. I think you guys have really good intentions, or whoever wrote it has good intentions, but there's a lot of loopholes, and that something needs to be determined. Maybe an expert that keeps it out of animal controls hands to determine the lineage of the dog. Personally, I think a lot of dogs get mis, you know, oh, that's a pit bull, or that's a pit bull, and, you know, a lot of times, they're not. There's a lot of similar breeds, and, and if you're gonna, if you're gonna do a specific thing like this, which I hope you don't, I really hope you don't. I mean, I, I have 11 personally Amstaffs. We show AKC, we have pointed show dogs. It's my favorite breed, I've had them since I was 15 years old. I didn't really come to repeat what everybody else said, but I just think that a lot of the things, such as the insurance clause, and some of those things really be examined a lot more carefully, because it's, it's just not, it, it allows too much control to, first of all, animal control, who, I have a friend who had the Wolf Hybrid, and, you know, supposedly the Wolf Hybrid, and the particular animal control officers I believe are here that constantly harassed and threatened my friends, which she probably should not have had the dogs, but I don't think it was handled very professionally. And any type of determination on a dog, I think it needs some sort of check or balance, apart from North Little Rock Animal Control. You need to bring in an expert or somebody who has experience with these dogs that's accredited, and not leave it up to animal control, and that's all I have to say.
Well, obviously, we would accept a, a designation for the AKC in terms of what the breed was.
Correct. I, I, I'm just saying, there are a lot of dogs that happen to be mutts that look similar to pit bulls, and usually, they, the pit bull gets blamed for a mixed breed, or a cur dog, a mutt dog, that just happens to look like a pit bull. And, you know, I, I'm a longtime Amstaff and pit bull owner. I, I just recently moved from North Little Rock because of the impending problems like Sherwood's having with the $500 registration, which I don't even know if they've even addressed before, made anybody pay. But I don't feel that where I live, I should be, you know, subjected to laws like that. I mean, sterilization, I, I just don't understand it. For the, for the people who really do have good dogs, and I'm, I'm not up here to attack the bill or anything, I think there's some good things that a lot of people need to adhere on that bill, but it's too broad, it needs, it needs some work, guys. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tom White. I would be the one that brought this issue to your attention two weeks ago. I've heard some interesting things about no breed being aggressive, and I'd like to point out, I don't think I mentioned this last time I was here, that the dog that attacked my dog was a really nice dog. My wife had petted it numerous times, I've been near it, it was a really nice dog. But let me tell you, since I was here, I have, I've had cause to remember that over my life, I've been bitten by two dogs, and I've been involved in a dog fight. I had forgotten about that. The first dog that bit me was when I was about 15, it was a Weimaraner, but it was tangled in this chain in the backyard, and 15-year-olds don't have much sense, I decided to help untangle it. It bit me in the cheek, but it let go, and I walked away with a small cut. On the second occasion, I was bitten by a German Shepherd in a park in Nashville, Tennessee. It bit me once on the hand, its owner grabbed it, and it stopped biting me. That in no way typifies the fight or the attack I saw on my dog on September the 5th. If I could just read a couple things, I will try to be brief. There is no way you could ever mistake a real, and by the way, this is from the American Pit Bull Terrier website. There's no way you could ever mistake a real APBT for anything else if you saw the way it fought. The quality that enables an APBT to defeat any other breed of dog, even a dog four or five times heavier, is not evident in the dog's phenotype. Neither the APBT's impressive jaw strength, nor the explosive muscular power of its torso, are enough to explain why a game 50-pound APBT can always overcome 120-pound Wart rider or 200-pound Mastiff. It is gameness, the quality of never quitting in spite of exhaustion, blood loss, and broken bones, that enables a performance-bred APBT to prevail against such odds. No other breed has even a quarter of the APBT's gameness. Now, I'm not positive what gameness means, but I don't think I like it. May I remind you that the number of pit bull attacks in North Little Rock have gone up significantly in the last few years, and, actually, Mr. Grace, is he still?
Let me, let me just indicate that the lines continue. I'm, I'm gonna have to, you know, those folks that came up and, and spoke originally, that's fine, you're welcome to come back. We're not going to get into an ongoing debate tonight. You know, I offered the opportunity for people to speak briefly, so I'm not going to permit any, anybody else, starting with those who have already spoken on back. You're welcome to come back, but we're not going to get into a running debate tonight.
We'll take this up in two weeks, then.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Jim, you're welcome to comment, but, you know, you were up there, we're, you know, we're just not going to get into an ongoing running debate.
Well, hi, Mayor, and, and Council. I'm just here to, to, in support of my very good friends and my good neighbors, the whites here, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
I'll be very brief. I'd like to pass out these pictures to the all, these are pictures that I took from the North Rock Animal Shelter, of attacks on two young children who have children in hospitals, shows the bites that they suffered, but also, I'll let you know something very briefly. First off, I don't have a dog anymore.
Oh, God.
But I wouldn't want any kind of law passed that says I couldn't have to keep my puppy. And so, I understand those people's feeling that way. Same time, too, 50% of the rottweiler, excuse me, the pit bull dog, pit bulldog represents about 1% of the dog population, but accounts for 50% of the dog bites. You looked at the dogs, the pictures I saw at the, this is the picture that got on online, the pictures that exist at the animal shelter show pit bulls hanging on to each other through a cage for minutes, a half hour, a time, never letting go of each other, because they will never stop fighting. Two, I think that liability insurance covers your children doing something, your dog doing something to someone, it's called liability insurance that you have. I don't think it discriminates on a dog, or so on, but I think if your dog bit someone, it might want to do it from that point on. So, I don't think that's a major issue also. I think that you realize that Marmel, Mountain Home even has a pit bull ban on it. Because, why, I don't know, but I'm sure, because a lot of high amount of people who retired there, Marmel has not had a problem or questioned, or whatever it is. I don't want you to move from your places. But basically, I think that if we've got this really wrong when saying, hey, we can't define what a pit bull is, I think the animal shelter people deal with dogs, the dogs that they capture, many of them are for the wrong kind of people, the people who make them fight, and so on like this. But several of them, you know, while I was at the animal shelter taking these pictures, a phone call came in from a lady who was hysterical. A pit bull in a neighbor's yard jumped over the fence and killed her German Shepherd while she was talking on the phone, and attacked another dog while we were there. And it's like, it was, whether it's on the county or North Little Rock, they were debating about, but the shelter sent somebody out there no matter what. So, people, you know, I don't want to take your, your little puppy from you, your rottweiler from you, whatever it may be, or your pit bull. But I think that those are, seem to be more prone to, and yes, people do make a difference there. So, you have to move out of the city to get rid of your, rid of your pit bulls. The insurance is something you have, if you own your home, it's already on their liability insurance.
The, where the council is the one that needs to listen, so we're, you know, we need to bring this to an end for tonight. You know, if you want to make one minute comment, I'll go ahead and let the two that are standing up. But, you know, we really, you know, are gonna get into this next council meeting. I'm gonna have to, I know it looks like, I'm gonna set some ground rules unless the council object, you know, for next council meeting, and we'll do it in a, in a, in a more balanced way. I can tell their passions are run high on both sides on this. Go ahead, one minute, and then we'll get back into it.
Okay. Mayor and the Council, my name's Rodney Farley. I live in North Little Rock, always have. I do have a pit bull. It's in a chain-linked fence inside, inside my yard, so it has two chain-linked fences. And I feel that this is very, my, my dog has a $30 license, because several years ago, I was down here and y'all raised it because of, you know, they, because it's not neutered. And also, it's a friendly dog, and I understand the problems that the, that the animal shelters have. And some of these, you know, there's also a four-dog limit. I'd like just to see that the ordinances that are in place, that those be taken care of, and it was also mentioned that they use these for drug houses, drugs are illegal. If they're using them to guard drug houses, bust the people.
And if you're aware of anybody that, that is violating the ordinance, you let us know, and we'll make sure that, you know, that we enforce it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Counts. I'm from North Little Rock. I run a service company with nine vehicles. And I was attacked by a pit bull back in the mid-'80s. And I was in the backyard, it was fenced in, the dog's name was Freddie. I was bent over working on a unit, and the lady, the boy's mother was in the backyard watching the dog, and never bit anybody. And I was to the wall whenever it broke from the lady and ran, and then it bit me in the back, and it, it wouldn't let go. And I'm slamming it into the wall, she's trying to sit, tell me not to hurt Freddie, and in the meantime, Freddie won't let me go. And I'm in my mid-20s, and I run out to a tree, and I'm trying to hit a tree, and Mr. Rob Thompson, who lived next door, who was 68, came through a fence, came around and grabbed the dog's back legs, and was pulling on the dog, and then finally, pulled the dog, and finally it broke loose from me, and reached under and bit him right here, and tore his muscle, tendons, and everything loose, and we had to go to court for almost two years over it. I, I, now, I do run a service company with, with vehicles, with servicemen. I haven't had any pit bulls attack them, but my attack happened in a backyard with the dog, and, and they said it a million times in court, the dog never attacked anybody, didn't hurt a, a family member or anybody, and it was unprovoked. I was like...